Good evening Hampton Bays and welcome to the May 7th Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time and I ask you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take note of the emergency exits over there and back here in case we need them. Okay, at this time I need a motion to approve the order of agenda.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, any nays? Okay. Clerk's report.
It is resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held on April 16, 2024.
I need a motion to accept the minutes of the clerk's report.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Okay, I need a motion to accept the minutes presented for the special meeting held on April 24, 2024. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is public comment. At this time, the Board will recognize any speakers wishing to address the Board regarding agenda items only. Okay, thank you. All right, now comes the fun part. Students of the Month, we're going to begin tonight with a high school and Mr. Mike Morgan will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn, and it's a pleasure to be the opening act for Mr. Shug and Mr. Meyer today. It's my pleasure to introduce the April Student of the Month for Hampton Bay's High School, Manal Nain. Manal was nominated by the Phys Ed Department, however, any department in this school could have selected Manal for Student of the Month. In Phys Ed this year, Manal thoroughly enjoyed the Badminton Unit because she has always liked the sport and plays it with her family. Speaking with a number of her teachers, both past and present, everyone agrees that Manal is destined for greatness. She is motivated, she's curious, and always wants to do her best. In terms of challenging herself, Manal has taken an extremely rigorous schedule, just not this year, but throughout her high school career. Her transcript includes AP World, AP Seminar, AP Chemistry, AP Research, AP Literature, AP US History, AP Calc, AB NBC, AP French, AP Bio, and AP Life. Did I cover them all? Okay. She has earned a three or higher on all of her exams so far, and I'm going to keep this short because I'm sure right after this presentation, Manal will be going home to study for her upcoming AP exams this week and next week, so we wish you good luck on all of your exams. Manal has also gained college credit through college economics and college government courses. This month, Manal presented a research on the use of multiple imaging modalities in assessment of hypertrophic cardio... Help me out with this one?
Cardio.
I knew I was going to need your help. By completing the science research program, Manal earned 12 credits for college. Manal is graduating from Hampton Bay's High School with potentially 48, give or take, college credits. She is not a senior in high school. Manal is effectively at this point, a college freshman, perhaps even sophomore status. I think that really deserves a nice round of applause for Manal. Manal has been in art club and enjoys graphic design. She actually helped me design the school profile for this year. She has served as president of key club and science club, and she has participated in Science Olympiad, Interact, Leo's Club, and played softball for three years. Manal plans on double majoring in chemistry and math. Although Manal has not cemented her college decision at this point, Stony Brook is looking like a great home. She plans to continue the research she started at Hampton Bay's High School and College and would like to attend medical school and become a cardiologist. For our younger students, she has these words of advice: "Challenge yourself, explore your limits, and see what you're capable of. Remind yourself, the workload is worth it in the end." So was the work worth it? Manal would like to thank her parents and her family, all of her teachers that have helped her in high school. We wish you the best in your future and we are really, really going to miss you, so make us proud.
Shug for the middle school, Student of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Good evening. Before we begin, I'd like to invite a sixth grade teacher, Mrs. Lucy Drowsky, to join me at the podium in honor of April's Student of the Month, introducing also Hampton Bay's Middle School sixth grader Matthew Valencia Abad. When I asked Matthew's teachers what it is that makes Matthew a strong choice for this award, they said the following: "Matthew is a well-rounded student who continuously strives to be the very best he can be in all areas of his educational career. He is a positive influence in the class and demonstrates wonderful leadership in all he does. Matthew is a compassionate learner who constantly wants to be better and help his peers, which leads him to be well-liked and respected by teachers and classmates. Besides being a wonderful student, Matthew is a very talented artist. He is trustworthy and honest, and it makes him a great candidate for Hampton Bay's Middle School Student of the Month, and it makes our school a better place. It's a pleasure every day to have Matthew in our classes." And I believe that's Matthew's little sister, our two-year-old, right? Who we talked about today. His teachers also told me that he can always be found helping a different classmate in need, conquering challenging math problems with Mr. Necaria, or exercising his imagination by playing charades with his classmates. Matthew couldn't say enough about his passion for mathematics, especially sixth grade algebra lessons with Mrs. Malone. Matthew enjoys jumping on the trampoline with his older brother and his baby sister outside of school, helping his dad repair and maintain pugs. A review of Matthew's non-biased report tells us he has strung in, you guessed it, math, and that aligns really well with his goal to someday have a career in the field of electrical engineering. Matthew's advice that he shared about how to be successful at HBMS is to be helpful, be on time, and never stop trying. Love that. Congratulations, Matthew, on being selected as Hampton Bay's Middle School's Student of the Month for April. We are all so proud of you. Congratulations.
Mark Meyer for the elementary school.
Thanks, Mr. Jocelyn. Would you like to ask Ms. Paul Mary to please come up and join me? Mrs. Paul Mary and I are happy to honor our April Student of the Month, Alexander Alex Preda. Alexander, come on up. Alex was chosen Student of the Month for April because he's a model student. Alex is always striving to do his best. He's a diligent worker, always on task, and always willing to challenge himself. He's a kind, helpful, and conscientious student. He enters the classroom each day with a positive attitude and always says good morning to Ms. Paul Mary as he enters. He's respectful and responsible and always ready to learn. Alex loves to participate and always brings insight to classroom discussions. He has a great sense of humor and makes everyone around him smile every day. Alex's favorite thing about school is reading groups. Alex loves to read. When Alex grows up, he wants to be an author illustrator. His favorite books are chapter books, especially the Flat Stanley series. Alex also loves to read comics because, in his words, "They really make reading interesting and exciting." Alex's favorite special is theme. He says that science really makes learning fun. He loves to do the hands-on activities and learning new things. Alex's favorite thing to do outside of school is to write and illustrate books and then read them to his family. Currently, he's working on a fiction story about dancing dinosaurs. He says he enjoys putting humor into his stories to make people laugh. In addition to writing stories, he's looking forward to his dad teaching him how to ride a bike this summer. Alex is a family man. He says he is proud to be Romania and enjoys visiting family there in the summertime. His favorite thing about Romania is the food. He recommends a boiled egg dish that's filled with an unbelievably delicious filling. In closing, Alex definitely embodies all of the qualities of a student of the month. We're proud of his accomplishments and look forward to all of the amazing things in his bright and successful future. Congratulations, Alex.
Next up, we have Mr. Lars Clemmensen to present a Scope Award.
Good evening. I'd like to ask Ms. Dayton to join me at podium, please. Each year, the Scope Education Services, which serves all of Long Island from Nassau County out to the north and south fork, host an Excellence in Education Awards Dinner, and that was held in March at Villa Lombardi's. Unfortunately, Kathy was ill that day, so we did COVID, right? It's still around. So, we said, "Don't go," but we're going to welcome you to the board meeting so we can celebrate you. And I'm so glad that Kathy is here, and Cassie, her daughter, is here as well. I want to tell a quick story that might personify one of the reasons why Kathy is the recipient of the Teacher Service Award selected by Scope Education Services this year. We had just opened the brand-new middle school, and that beautiful long hallway back to the cafeteria, very bright, very lit, tall ceilings with beams, but it was a blank canvas. And we unleashed this art teacher on this middle school, and I come down the hall one day and she's on a ladder and she's strapping seat belts around these steel beams. Do you remember this? And I said, "Why are there seat belts up there?" And she said, "Well, I found them, and they're going to be great to hang students' artwork." And to this day, those brown tan seat belts are still up there. Silly, a silly story, but symbolic of the level of commitment that Kathy has shown the students and families of Hampton Bay's for 20 years now. She started her art education career in a portable building at the elementary school that was torn down as that new lighthouse at the middle school went up, and joined me as the founding art teacher when we opened the door in 2008 of Hampton Bay's Middle School. What followed were amazing art shows and art club and art lunch for the kids who want to come upstairs because that middle school cafeteria is a little chaotic for them, and a place for them to feed their passion in art. What followed was Kathy Dayton as a class advisor, who was on the ropes course and the zip lines of Frost Valley, making sure that all students have the opportunity to participate. What followed now is a new experience that we'll have next week when we take the seventh graders on the cross-sound ferry to Mystic Seaport, a throwback trip from the '90s in Hampton Bay's, and we've added a college visit as well where we'll take our seventh graders to UConn at Avery Point to spend the entire morning on a college campus. Now, just two weeks ago, that class trip was represented by about half of the members of the seventh grade. Kathy Dayton is on the case, so there was no doubt that we were going to get the numbers that we needed, and we'll take 128 students with us next week to make sure everybody has that opportunity. When we say "all," Kathy Dayton means "all." She sees all of our students and sees their passions, sees how art can connect to their lives in ways that are just beyond the art classroom but a really enriching part of their life. We're not going to have Kathy for too much longer in the district, but we're going to savor every minute that we have. Retirement is on the horizon at some point because there's grandkids that want to spend as much time as we have with Kathy over the last 20 years. As Mr. Meyer says, congratulations to you on this Scope Award. There's nobody who deserves it more. Congratulations.
At this time, we will take a short break to recognize the honorees tonight and take pictures. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. At this time, we're going to ask Lars Clemmensen to present the budget.
Okay, tonight is the budget hearing, which will start as soon as I'm done with this presentation. A lot hasn't changed in this presentation except the final numbers. There was a special board meeting held on April 24th over spring break. That was just a few days after the legislature finalized the state budget. We had to wait till that point so that we could finalize a budget that had the full numbers. What I did between then and now is to adapt this presentation a little bit to be a visual representation of what this budget represents. Budget's a representation of your values. It's a 100-page document with numbers and dollars attached to them. But a board of education, a school community, the administrative team, the faculty and staff, we build the budget that is in accordance with our values, staying under the tax cap, providing opportunities for kids to be competitive, to figure out what they like and what they're good at, where they're going to go in life, to make sure that our physical grounds are taken care of in an ongoing way so that we're not caught short with facilities that need tremendous amounts of work. And then finally, make sure that we're prepared for any rainy days that come, to build up our reserves for the purposes that we're allowed to. So I had the opportunity to talk to a few community groups so far to make sure we get the word out about the board of education and budget vote on Tuesday, May 21st. It's important that the community comes out to participate in that vote. And so I just want to take a few minutes to go through a representation of what is important in this budget. It is largely a maintenance budget. It is driven by some cost increases, particularly in social education, a few other programs. Benefit costs have gone up, utility costs have gone up. The world has gotten a little bit more expensive. Yet, this is a little bit better than a maintenance budget because we have some exciting initiatives that we've started this year that we'll continue with. And with the conclusion of the COVID grants, this budget now includes, as part of the general fund, two additional school social workers. So that builds out our mental health and support team for kids and families by extension to five, one in each building, each building staff with bilingual support staff as well. And the two additional social workers split their time between all three buildings so that there's a synthesis between, you know, there always was, but this is just even better, that when you have social workers who work in elementary and middle, they recognize the kids when they come from elementary and middle. Same is true for middle and high school as well. So just a quick picture walk of photos you've seen, photos we've celebrated of things that are important to us in Hampton Bays, things we think about every day. So certainly a commitment to preparing for careers and life readiness. So Mr. Shug mentioned Naviance Report as part of what our students are, what Matthew's report said. We're starting that conversation about self-awareness development and career and post-high-school-life planning. We're committed to partnering still with Eastern Suffolk Boise's Career and Technical Education Program with 40 students in that program, anywhere from aviation to marine mechanic, automotive, cosmetology, barbering, and a lot more. We have a student who will fly to Connecticut this year before he'll drive a car. That's the beauty of career and technical education. Then we saw the Bayman Financial Literacy Center there on the left, and of course, culinary students who create these delicious delights for us to have often. And they're graduating with credentials and jobs and people fighting over them. So a commitment to civics, civic education, democracy, and rejecting our democracy. So one of the sayings that I like to say often is, when the public raise their hands in the United States and say, "Kids these days," we believe in that, too. Kids these days, you know, we say with a little bit different of inflection because of what we see our kids doing and how we see our kids succeeding. The 11th grade trip is now, the DC trip is back, but it's now in 11th grade, and we continue with our veterans and military enlisted flag ceremony. May 23rd, we will have our 80th flag ceremony. We will recognize five seniors going into the United States Military, four headed to the Marine Corps, one headed to the United States Navy. So we'll celebrate them. We work together with Southampton and West Hampton Beach. And if it's a sunny day, we'll be in Agawam Park, beautiful setting to celebrate those students. They'll each receive a United States Constitution because in just a few weeks after graduation, days for some, they're going to swear to defend that Constitution with their life. Their parents are going to receive a Blue Star flag, which is exactly what it says in its name. It's a red flag that hangs with a blue star in the middle of it. Families hang that flag in their front window, and that's an opportunity for their neighbors and the community to know that someone from that home is defending our nation. Because a commitment to the military is not just the service member, it's the entire family that makes that commitment. That's important to us. I think it's important that we say that often to the community who respects and participates with us in these ceremonies. But when the world says, "Kids these days," we're worried. We say, "Kids these days, come check it out." And certainly investing in the sciences. You heard Manal talking, you know, Annie's already on her cardiologist pre-appointment list for when she's done with medical school. Mr. Morgan's going to learn to say cardiomyopathy. You know, you did good. But just remarkable work being done in the science research program. And little things like the solar eclipse with the little ones on the left there, hopefully they'll grow up with that passion and love that turned them into science research students as well. Bayman Athletics, you can see, we will have varsity football back again next year. Our track and field kids, we can't even put the record board up on the wall because they just keep breaking the records. And so we have to wait till the seasons are over. They're doing great. I've talked about enrollment continuously, almost every meeting for the last few months, really a couple of years now. On the bottom-right picture, you see Isaiah Letanzio there. He's a senior. He plays for South Fork United. That's our boys' lacrosse program. We combine with five schools on the east end on the South Fork. Get on a little bus every day after school from here, a dismissal, and go to practice at Southampton because it's centrally located. We're all experiencing that enrollment decline right now, West Hampton, Southampton, all of us. No one is immune to that. We're a little bit more stable right now, but forecasting on the horizon, small elementary school classes, larger graduating classes. So innovative partnerships like South Fork United, I think, are going to end up being on the table for lots of different things, other programs that we haven't even imagined yet, that we might need to consolidate so that there's still opportunity for kids. South Fork United was a great case for how that can work. Certainly being committed to the arts. I mentioned this last month, that we were recently named Best Community for Music Education. Grease Lightning on the left there and Beauty and the Beast in the middle school as well. Elementary school concert will be Tuesday, May 21st this year, followed by the second grade singers of Flag Day or the 36th Annual Flag Day. So a commitment to a well-rounded arts education is important to us as well. You certainly can't read all of that text there, but you can see that college acceptances are very diverse across the state and across the country. The United States Marine Corps and Navy are up there on the top, almost every SUNY in the system, NYU, Long Island University, Hofstra, Penn State, University of Georgia, Binghamton. We have kids going all over the place. Some have not made their announcements just yet because they're still waiting for that FAFSA package because, show me the money, right? When it comes to college. We think we'll have between three and five students committing to play a sport in college. So that was a priority of the board a number of years ago to start, double down on that process of teaching families about the NCAA process and connecting with college programs. And it's great to see kids making those commitments. We'll recognize them in early June. I'll skip through the enrollment pretty quickly, but again, large graduating classes at the 12th grade level, smaller ones, 200 at the 12th grade level, 129 or so at the first and second grade level. That's going to have a right-sizing effect for us. It's going to force us to ask questions like I just mentioned about South Fork United and what other programs we might sustain by combining and partnering with others. This year's tax levy increase for the budget will be a 2.2% tax increase on the levy. That is underneath the tax cap. That is, we have been underneath the tax cap every year since its inception. And on average, dating back to 2010, we've seen about a 2% tax levy increase each year. Bigger ones years ago really mitigated and smaller ones down to the zeros over the last couple of years. Our budget increases about 3.3%, and so you can see where that averages out. We've had a spending plan increase of about 3%, 2.95%, 3% a year. That big, tall skyscraper of a line there was last year because that was largely driven by the amount of state aid that we received. It was a good thing we received that state aid and that our school business administrator, our assistant supervisor, said, "Don't go shopping with this. We want to make sure that this money is sustainable. Let's make some one-time investments right now. We don't have to spend the money. We could have spent on a lot of things, but let's do some one-time investments, including the 1957 and 1968 toilet rooms at the elementary school. That will be renovated for the first time since 1957 and 1968." And windows along the west building, the west hallway of the elementary school, that's the 1998 wing. So a couple of maintenance projects that have, for items that have outlived their useful life. And so now that those projects are set and funded, we saw some significant increases in costs in special education and other costs throughout the budget. We were able to move that in and mitigate a bigger tax increase or a cut to our budget so that we were able to sustain the program that we wanted. In 2010, 88 cents of the dollar on our school budget was provided by the local taxpayer. In 2024, that number is 74 cents. That has been a commitment of the Board of Education for a number of years to bring the commitment of the local taxpayer down by advocating for more state aid in Albany. Every dollar that comes from Albany is one we don't have to spend in our community, which already, I won't say enjoys the tax burden, but has a tax burden that is disproportionate to our community. So very sensitive to that, very careful with our expenses, and our budget votes have passed with high approval ratings because I think that message is out there, that there's a frugality and a wisdom with how we make investments and expenses in the district are sustainable, and we can stretch those dollars far. Okay? So again, a 2.2 tax levy increase, a 3.32 spending increase. Again, the drivers of the budget were cost increases in special education, employee benefits. We're experiencing challenges around staffing shortages for support services like school buses. If you're an elementary school parent, you're living that challenge where our teams are doing the best they can to navigate. When the people aren't there and the equipment isn't there, it becomes very, very challenging, but communication is key and being flexible is key there, navigating those challenges. So this is the budget hearing, so I'm going to wrap up to say that it is Tuesday, May 21st. Two questions on the ballot to authorize the budget for next year. The second question is to authorize up to $300,000 for minor repair and innovation. So that keeps that maintenance program moving forward for us. And then voters will be asked to vote for two candidates for the Board of Education. There are two seats, and we have two candidates, Liz Scully and Anne Colhane, both running for reelection. Thank you for your interest to continue serving. We still want people to come out and participate in the vote. It is very important. That voter turnout is an exercise that is reliable each year because it's important to be involved in that process. I'll take any questions from the board, and then I'll stop and turn it over back to you, Mr. Jocelyn, for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. At this time, I'd like to open the budget hearing for the proposed 2024-25 budget. I will take a motion to open the budget hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Any discussion? Okay. At this time, we will take any public comment on the proposed 2024-2025 school budget.
Who are?
Okay, hearing, no additional comments. I will call for a motion to close the budget hearing. Motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The next item is Section 4, Finance and Operations. I will ask for a consent agenda for items 4A through 4F. Before I ask for a motion, does anybody have any questions on the agenda? Lars? Okay. Okay, I call for a motion to approve agenda items 4A through 4F. Motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Section 5, Student Services. We will do a consent agenda for item 5A. I call for a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Section 6, Personnel. We will do a consent agenda for item 6A through 6G. Before I ask for a motion, do any members have any questions about these agenda items?
I would like to recuse myself from 6G, please.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Lars, anything you'd like to add to that?
No.
Okay, therefore, I call for a motion to approve agenda items 6A through 6G with Anne Colhane recusing herself from 6G.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The next item, Section 7, Board of Education. Before I ask for a motion, anybody have any questions for 7A? I call for a motion to approve agenda item 7A. Motion?
Sorry, guys. Let's do seven, and then we can go back to 6H.
Oh, okay. Motion on 7A?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Just 6H.
Just say 6H?
A motion. Call for a motion.
Oh, motion. I have to go back to item 6H. I call for a motion.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I said 6G, didn't I? It's 6H. I thought so. I quoted after I said it. All right. Okay, at this time, we will move to item 7B, the pre-K lottery. I will turn it over to Mr. Meyer, our elementary school principal, to lead us, and Mr. Rich T.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Everybody's favorite board meeting of the year as we welcome our newest students, our pre-K students. And we're very blessed that we do have a spot for every student in the lottery tonight. So we're simply drawing to see AM, PM, how the slots work out and the slot they'll eventually get. So that's really the order, but we are fortunate that every student will be getting a spot in our program at some point during the day. So without any further ado, we're going to ask Mr. T, please begin the lottery.
I just want to thank Board of Education for this lovely... My shirt's stained.
No five-gallon drum.
It's a tubular. No five-gallon drums.
I don't have to bring it back to the drums.
... extremely happy. Thank you.
Fifty-five gallon drum.
I put all of the names into the beautiful new drum here. I'm going to turn it a couple times, and we're going to take out 10 at a time, label them 1 through 10, and then I'll hand them to Mrs. Cordeur, and she will read the names, and we'll go from there. It's a big moment for this machine. It's a late boyish. Ooh.
Wow.
Incredible. Okay. You know, I've been in the gym, I've been working out, but I can't seem to get this thing. Is this a Joe Solis or no?
He bought the cheap tape.
Yes. Okay.
We have number one, Alisson Nieto.
Okay, we have number one, Alisson Nieto.
The number two pick goes to?
Erica Bueno.
Number 11. Number 12. Number 13. Number 14.
Dusty Burby.
You called him. You have two parents here. Yes, no? You called him? All right. Number 15.
Luke Ryder.
Number 16.
Marie Antades. Carlos Farado Alves.
Number 18.
Charlie Medina.
Number 19. Twenty-three.
Will Jones. Ria Montargo Paramillo. Lisa Ward. Barquicio Luchan Murillo. Kaylee Santos.
And number 30.
Samantha Jimenez Esquiar. Chelsea O'Gee. Sebastian Sarmiento. Kayla Simmons. Tese Monteloperaza.
And 38, we can include that lottery fun. I know you're all upset, but it's not a bad thing.
Thank you all for your support of our program through the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we welcome our new pre-K students to the Hampton Bay School. The final item on our agenda tonight is Section 8, Public Comment, an opportunity for anyone to address the Board of Education of any issue of their interest. Please identify yourself and address, address for the record. Please keep your questions and comments to a reasonable timeframe so that all can be heard. Please understand that if questions cannot be answered tonight, we will respond in writing within one week. Okay. Any other business? Larry?
No, sir. Rich, excuse me. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I would like to thank all of our teachers and Hampton Bay School District. We really appreciate all of them.
Aw, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm an ex-teacher, but I'll take it.
We're thankful for you, too.
Thank you. Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a good evening.